Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Patty, second by Aaron. Roll ball fit. Yeah. Any opposed? Any extensions? It was unanimous. Thank you. And we'll stand and pledge allegiance please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with a third team and justice for all.
We'll just move on to our new business. And we have approval of the 2023-24 salary. And that's why we're having our special meeting today. Laurie, Dr. Wilson.
Laurie is absolutely mine. I prefer that.
So we came to you a few weeks ago and had a conversation about salaries. And you know, we are continually updating things as we go through the end of this month. This is really, you know, with the school business. And if you have a year end in June, if anyone else has a year end in June, it is unbelievably busy. And as things come in and things go out, we're continually updating the information that we have. And so at that timeframe, we thought that we had asked for you to consider $300 to the base. But we also knew that we did not know what the other schools were giving. And we want to remain competitive with them as much as we can. So with some more information that came in and people were... Our schools, you know, you don't want to give away all the information upfront because you want to make sure that you're doing what you can for your employees. So we did find that other schools were definitely giving more of a raise to the base than what we could. And so we went back and it's not that we came up with magic money. It's not that we came up with more money. Because when we are, when I am budgeting for next year right now, I have revenues flat. Revenues flat as far as what we have received this year. I've said it's the same as next year. Do I expect a little bit more than that? Yes, but I also want to be on the conservative side and budget those flat. So with that, we have come back and in order to remain as competitive as we can and also knowing that we will never ever be able to meet cost of living that's going up right now. There's no one that can meet that. But we're going to try to do the best that we can. So we were asking that if we, instead of $40,300, if we could go to $41,000 for the base. Now, if schedule or budgeting revenues flat and expenses on the higher end, then it does take a little bit of a hit to our fund balance. And so if, usually I believe in the past, you've tried to at least transfer $2 million in the fund balance. So that that also keeps it at about 20% in the past. I don't know that that will happen next year. I didn't even know that that will happen the year after. Not only are salaries going up, but as you know, inflation is going up. So welcome to have the discussion on any questions that you have. But we would like to, we would like to for you to approve $41,000 as the base for next year, knowing that that is, it affects everyone in the district because all teachers, all classified staff, all administrators are off the base of the teacher salary. And that with the potential of only transferring 15, 1.5 million to the fund or capital instead of 2 million. If we come through the end of the year and there are more, we would definitely transfer more.
So the $41,000 is separate to the step?
Yes, a step, that's very good, yes. You'd have a step and then you would go from 40 to 41,000. If it's an average of 2% to 3% across the board.
On the step?
On all of it.
On all of it.
Including the thousand.
Including the thousand. Yes.
So in coming, we give 41, brand new. And then every one of these other numbers is going to be 5,000.
Increase 5,000 and then there will be a step. And it depends on where they fall, if the step is 650 into 700 or 1,000.
They would get that too.
Yes, they would get that too. Yes.
How did the surveys come back from teachers?
From the teachers on what? Because I, oh, we haven't got the information yet. The one that we did through Studer, is that what you're asking about?
Your group maybe?
MSTA.
MSTA. They're doing a survey on their opinion on whether they wanted to...
Oh, I'm sorry. You have to bear with me. What they were, there was a handful, I don't know handful, I don't know what the percentage was. If I could find the email, that some would say that $40,300 was not enough for what they're going for. Is that what you're asking me? I don't have all of those. It was just trying to think how she worded that, that it was... It's either 40,300, no, there wasn't like another choice.
There is either no raise or 300.
Yes, yes. And there were some that said yes and some that said no, they didn't. I can find that chart for you real quick if I can.
I just was curious about the survey.
And there was, I don't know that there was anything on it that said, what else would you like?
Right.
That I don't know that was on there.
I think it was just two options, it was yes or no and...
Yeah, let me see, I can probably find that. Keep discussing, I'll look.
Can you tell us a little bit more about that survey?
It's just a survey that's out for the teachers who are MSTA. They want to give their opinion on whether they were comfortable with the raise that was presented.
And I think they do that every year.
Right. In my opinion, it's the teachers that reach out to me were the ones to vote in that.
Were they offended?
I'm sure they did.
There's a good handle that were upset. My concern is as we are looking at approving a thousand dollar rate, I think that's a good number, but is that being the school district in a precarious position? Do you know, are reserve down to 60%? Is that too low?
It is not too low, but it is something that we want to continue down that path now. If you go back and you can book it priorly or so, it's been quite a few years ago, that it got down to 12% and then you started working your way back up. I don't, and this is probably pessimistic, but with how prices keep going up and with how salaries keep going up, I don't know that you will recover as fast as what you have in the past. It doesn't put us in a precarious position, you just don't... There are many schools that operate with 15% and above on a normal basis, that's just normal for them. But that's not what fiscal board has chosen in the past. So it is something that you would have to feel comfortable with. I would not want it to continue to slide, slide, slide over the next... Will next year, like the year after next, could it get to 15% based on what the inflation rate is? On what are needs of the district? I don't know that. Where we've been talking about some long-range forecasting to see where we could potentially be. Does it put us in a precarious position? No. Is it what you have been used to over the past 10 years? It's not bad either.
And that's always, of course, been driven by the board, the reserve balance. And we always felt it was better at a higher rate, we didn't want to be a banger.
Right.
But we went on the reserve and of course, we've all heard the word inflation. Now, it's impacted us all in every aspect right now. So you know, that means that our money tree, I always call it our money tree a lot. It's the same kind that say NICS or central brands or some of the other schools have. It's just they have a little more fertilizer to put on the tree to produce more money.
That's very true.
And so we don't, you know, we may have to purchase some more fertilizer for our money tree, which means the only way we can get more money is by asking for a tax hike to our constituents and let them decide what they want to have money available for our teachers.
That is definitely on the table.
The board can say, oh, they want to...
Have a conversation about that.
And say, we're going to do it, but we're not going to do it unless we have approval.
Yeah. So with adding the $1,000 to the base, does that mean every level windows up by $1,000? Everybody's getting it?
Everybody gets it.
Minimum.
Minimum.
Right. To think to be a person.
Understand. And if we look at the numbers on the paper, that's still below a lot of the surrounding.
So I found it. The MSTA, it says there were 370 respondents and...
Out of how many teachers, how many do we afford? 700 to 750?
Not even that many.
For MSTA, you're probably looking at about 450 at most.
Yeah.
So you've got about three quarters at least.
And so 90% of them said yes and 10% said no. So let's say it's 37, 38 people said no.
But the only choice was you can have $300 on that.
Yes, that was the choice. Yes.
Right. A reward set of options, would you like more than 300?
And you know, definitely over the next couple of years, we'll have to look at numerous things. We will have to look at where we are on our positions. You know, will we have to move some positions back into the classroom? Will we have, as far as attrition goes? Not adding positions this year, for next year, we're not looking to add this, maybe a special education position because it's something that we have to have. Only adding positions that you definitely have to add. We will, who was another one I had on my mind? We talked about attrition, we talked about taxes. There was something else and I just went right out of my, I apologize. But we will have to look at everything for the next few years because money will be tight. We're not that we're going under, the sky is not falling. It's just like when you're at your own house. You know, I have to eat more spaghetti this month than I am steak this month.
Perfect.
Yes.
Currently, is all the funds in from the state?
No, not yet.
And even counting whatever?
No, but they're in the working budget. So the majority of it, we do have accounted for. Because when I made projections, it's based on what our working budget. And I'm telling you, every day I go in and I update that revenue so it can be in the working budget. Yes. But the sky is not falling. It's just that we just need to be aware and we need to tighten our belts and be very cognizant of what we're doing over the next couple of years.
And you said you projected those with flat revenue.
I did.
But our town is growing.
Yeah. It is. I don't know that it's growing at the rate that we always, that we think it is. Now, west side, that area with those apartments coming online, that may, we may see some growth there. But we were looking at the demographic study. And you know, when they're saying there's a 2% to 3% every year, well, we also need to realize that how many students are leaving Philly virtual. And that affects us this year. And so there's a little bit of discrepancy there because like, oh, we're missing theoretically 80 or 90 students here. But when we went back and looked at it, they all went virtual. So yes, revenues are projected low.
Which is good.
Which is good, which is what we want to do. And you know, when we, I've had, talked with the assessor about where we are for the fall. And then also, we're going to have a conversation with Joe Kender again tomorrow to have a conversation on taxes this fall, how it's going to affect us.
The thing we got to keep in our thoughts too is that the growth that had such a positive impact on us before doesn't have such a positive financial impact as it does now, all going back to inflation.
Right.
So you know, demographic studies can tell us all things, but we got to also realize how much cost has impacted that as well. And it's really not...
I agree.
We can't, we can't basically just...
Just not grow the level.
Say, well, our town's still growing. Well, that doesn't mean nothing because we don't know what net profit that is bringing to us. Compared to last year, visually, see a lot of things that it was producing from everything. So it's a fine line.
It is, it is. And you know, we'll keep it updated for you. And you know, you saw some at that last meeting, some of the reports that we're going to work on. And then I've got Ashley this year that we're going to work on some reports so that we can stay on top of it and give you information on a very timely basis. But you know, if, we need to look at how this will play out. You know, we need to look at, who said, the middle of the salary schedule? Because we are facing this year for the first time, people leaving. Because you can go to a different school, such as Springfield, they make more money in the middle of that salary. Now, they also went to, they condensed their salary schedule, they only have five columns. They did that a few years ago. We have eight columns, 10 columns. So they did condense theirs a little bit, which makes a little bit of a difference.
It's my understanding that a majority of teachers don't have, they're not under contract right now. Does contracts have an issue to them?
Oh, no, all contracts said are, we are legally required to send, have an issue. Yes, you're a tenured teacher, and this is a brand new tenured teacher. The tenured teacher is not required to send a contract.
Any teachers that versus five-year teachers have got that contract?
They have.
So in the past years, were tenured teachers receiving contracts prior to?
We went back and we looked, in the past couple of years, no, they have not. Because you are not required by law to do it until, they are automatically assumed that they are coming back to start July 1 unless they give us notice. And so no, a contract, if you go back, I think at least two years, there was not a contract that went out between March and July to them or to June.
You may want to communicate that to your teachers because they, they're saying they're going, well, you're not under contract.
Yeah.
And there's some teachers that have left other school districts that I know of that were not under contract. And they felt the freedom to say, well, I'm going to pay it off.
We have, we have talked about that a little bit with Rochelle on trying to, an attempt to return or have some type of other contract for them. Yes.
Something in writing saying, hey, there's a job here.
There's a job, yes. Turn with your plan.
Yes, we realized that, I'm glad you brought that up because Rochelle and I did have that conversation. And it may have been based on a conversation we had. But we know we have to do something different next year.
Without going into those sessions, mentioning, hey, if there are teachers that have reached out to me and saying that, hey, I was just beginning a contract, but because I haven't yet and another school district reached out to me and offered me a position, making more money.
Sure.
They took me.
Yeah, going back, past few years, they did not receive one. A tenured teacher has not received. Because that was one thing that I definitely double-checked on. But when you only do it once a year, people forget. And you used to, they used to be different colors. And now everything's electronic, so you definitely forget. But yeah, when we first started, you would have a pink copy for this. I remember one time, we all got pink contracts. What's that name? And we were freaking out because everybody got a pink contract. But we are aware of that and we were, we're going to try to work to get that fixed. I'm glad you said that.
It'll be something to tell them, hey, your job's still here.
Sure, sure. But time has changed, times have changed, they really have.
So understanding this, when we voted to approve all of the, all those teachers that were on, whatever, or was somebody that we didn't, but anyway, that we hired, they were not given a contract at that time?
They're only probationary teachers, the tenured teachers are not.
They weren't even sent information saying your contract's been approved by the Board of Education or fiscal year.
No.
Not this time.
I guess always, it was always hammer, it was always that.
They got their contract.
In the last couple of years, we did not.
Right.
And I, the reason they didn't is they were trying to save the back and forth of paperwork because they were trying to wait till we had a salary approved. And then they just, because you've got a permanent contract and it's a, it's a legal document that's like a title. And so your title is you're coming back. You didn't, unless you give it up, we can't take it from you.
Right.
And so then we only updated it when we had the final amount for salary. And so that's why we only sent it out after we had a new salary amount instead of sending out, here's once, here's twice. There's been some years we've changed that number three times.
I can understand that, but we agreed on the $300 raise at a step. Didn't the contracts not go out at that time?
No, we didn't agree, we didn't vote on $300.
We just talked about it.
We just talked about it.
We just talked about it. To the MSTA.
Yeah, I still believe that.
No.
I still believe that, I know, I understand that if it was a living document at that point, you would have to adjust it. I still think that's better than losing them.
Oh, I agree. And like I said, this is the first year, I really think, well, to my knowledge, whereas we're having conversations, this is the, this is the first year this has ever happened to Ozark.
It is, this is, this is...
So we're living and learning.
And part of it, maybe there's more recruiting going on.
Oh, heaven.
And you know what I mean? I would say that's a one, it's a bigger, bigger issue.
That is.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so yes, we are, Rochelle and I did have that conversation. And we'll work on it.
Teachers explaining the position of the local school of why.
Sure.
Because our intention is what it is.
Maybe in the coming forward, we'll make sure that, I mean, give them a time of the notices will be out by...
Like February or March.
They should know.
We can't, we don't, we can't do that.
We're going to make sure they get, we will be adjusting the...
Sure.
I think it has to be a creation to market points, a lot of communication, the contract, it can be a... Just saying, no, your position is there.
Sure.
We will have it, just override, it could be a simple reminder.
And I agree, times have changed, we had to change our receivers and now we're doing it too. Absolutely. Yep.
How much difference are we looking at in those mid-salaries, higher mid-salaries in other districts?
There was five few on some of them. Thousands.
Like five or...
Yeah, or thirty.
Seven to ten.
Yep.
But you know, I agree with all of that, I think we should do something. I know we can only do a little at a time.
Yeah.
But the thing is, a lot of those teachers are now masters, but they have 70% or more.
Five few didn't.
We paid for their master's degree. So that's something right there. I don't know what that would have cost if they actually went to college or went online and got their masters. That's something right there.
Isn't that something else?
That's something else.
It's not something else.
A lot of, yeah, a lot of.
You don't say you have to work so long?
That's what I do.
I know.
It's a, it's a really, the lawyer says that you're on touching ground there. You can't, you can, so we talked to them about three to five years. And most of them, if you look at our years past, they've all stayed at three to five. But the lawyer legally said, you can't...
You can't sign it in a contract or what?
They're not signing themselves over. There is one school district recently that I talked to that has like a pro rate. You leave within one year, you owe us this amount of money.
Oh, that's what ours is too.
But they've not, they've said they haven't given it past their legal. They just did it, it's a good blood.
Kind of like some non-conceits.
Right, it is, it's like some non-conceits. So I don't know, it's a great way to look at it.
Well, I don't want to take anything from anybody, but if you are investing in this money, then you are investing...
Absolutely.
And thankfully...
That's what I wanted to say, we have invested.
The ones who've left this year aren't in that group, which I'm grateful for, but...
Wait, everything's not the big place on the table.
Yeah.
Everything. Things that we have always done because it has worked for Ozark or because it was what we've always done, no longer there. We're going to have to look at everything.
I agree. Because our teachers are most important.
They are.
I mean, our students are, but our teachers are next.
Yeah.
Because the teachers impact the students.
Exactly.
And I assume we compare health plans and...
Yes, that was the third thing. That was the third thing.
That was the third thing.
And I should have wrote this, I will learn, I'll need to just write that in my notes. It's that we do need to look at health. We have a wonderful, wonderful relationship with Cox. And I do not want it to go out here that we are looking to change that relationship. Okay? But it is something that we're going to have to look at next year too. Everything, everything has to be on the table.
Have we ever looked at self-insuring?
You know, I'm sure we have, I don't know from where I'm at as far as, no, since I've been here just a year. But I have no problems looking at that and having those conversations. We're going to, we're going to have to think outside the box.
I just say that because I'm right there with you. I'm doing the same at my other place.
Yeah, and we will have to have bids and we will, yeah.
It's a necessity.
It is. And like I said, we have a wonderful relationship with Cox, as you know.
Right. The percentage did go up.
Yes, it did.
Is there a cap on that?
There is. Yeah, it went up 7% this year and we thought it was going to go up 9%.
Okay.
And usually when you go to a self-funded or consortium, you earn tiers and you have caps on those tiers too. But as with all plans, especially in the educational world, if you have, and I hate to say this, if you have a few sick people, you will, you're right there with your plan, they're not going to shop it out. They're not going to, you're not going to be able to change.
Your utilization rate.
Yes. Yes.
Are we, well, I've lost it, what does it, health plans, licensure? Oh, four-day week, are we losing any of the four-day week?
You know, I don't think so right now. We've had a conversation, it's really been here lately, the past few weeks that, because I, when I'm having a conversation with Craig and with Curtis, they're like, this has never happened before. And I said, oh, this is normal stuff. But it's not for a four-day week, it is to go to a school that pays a little bit more money. Now, do I foresee that that could be a definite factor in the next few years? Absolutely. As other schools around us go to a four-day week and if the government continues to fund $38,000 for school districts that are not at $38,000, who, if you had a choice of working four days and making 38 or working five days and making 41? So right now, I don't know if everything is passed yet that is in there in the bill or in the budget, that if you are not a school that pays $38,000, the government will fund all of it to get you to $38,000. Last year, it was like a 60-40, 70-30 split, so you still had to pay for something. This year is 100% paid for in the budget, which helps the smaller schools, but it hurts us. Because if I could go to another school and just make $3,000 less to work on my four days a week.
And it hurts, but it also hurts their, their mid-tiers potentially.
It does, and I can speak to that.
The salary levels.
Yeah, because you could be a new teacher.
And you're going to make exactly what...
And year three, you may be only making 35.
Absolutely, you might not keep on long-term.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
As additional concessions to the teachers, has there been any further talk about reducing the amount of time that they're here or required to be at the community when there's not students here?
No, we haven't, not for this year, but we'll have that conversation next year. But, because I knew we had had a small conversation on that. And so right now, the staff is required to work 182 days, or the teachers. And our school days, 168.5. So they are required to be here about 12, 14, 13 and a half days if there is 14 and a half days more than what a student is here. We have not had that conversation. I can tell you that right now, other schools in our area, their staff are required to be more, to be more, to be there more than what we have.
Sure. It has something to say, okay, if you can't even pay, then what's more valuable?
Time.
And the teacher showing up two weeks before school starts and sitting here watching YouTube videos because they have to be here?
Well, some of those, I will say that it's a week before. And on the videos, part of it, because I know what you're talking about, or I think I do, they are required to watch a lot, all faculty and staff are required to watch a lot of videos for...
Including the board.
Yes. I forgot about that.
I was talking more entertainment.
Oh.
You keep to make the time pass. They sit here fully with the bells.
They shouldn't be.
Shouldn't be.
No, we've got work out for them.
Out the ears.
But they can, what they're saying to me is they can get a lot of these things done at home and wouldn't necessarily need to be sitting here to do it.
So that's a conversation to have.
All the flexibility.
Yeah, the flexibility, that is a conversation to have. You know, we saw more flexibility with COVID. And then you go back into your normal way of business and you require people to be here. I don't, I don't mind having that conversation at all.
Something that we can do that doesn't cost us anything, it's their responsibility to have their room and their self-funding anyway.
You will always run up against that it's not fair for all or the concession or the thought because you're, there's many jobs that have to be here during the day. And I have always said, players not always equal. But I think, I think we have always done a really good job of trying to make it as equal as we can. So just keep that in mind as we're having these conversations.
And the number of days is not necessarily up to us, correct? I mean, that's not, that's a wall that you can...
Well, the number of hours that a student goes to school, we are required to go 1,044 hours. But then they also want you to add 60 more on top of that for snow days. And then we go... Uh, and then we go another thirty over that. There's a lot. I mean, when you're talking about salary, there is, there's time, there's what the state requires, there's what we require, uh, there, there's just a lot, there's, it's more than just a thousand dollars. There are other conversations that we have also.
I like, I'll do this. I want to add one more thing that's a factor, that's the, the teachers consider when they're working, and I think that will continue to improve also is, honestly, the work environment. If you have camaraderie with your teachers and you're working with, you know, you love that place, and you're not going to switch school districts just because of a, I mean, I understand they have to provide for their families, but I'm open to that. But, but loyalty, if people know their love, their respect, their value, they're gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna have no loyalty to them. So, yeah. That time, giving them more time flexed, that they do stuff at home, you know, that kind of stuff, shows that we value that and respect them. I think that encourages a lot of that.
Right. Any other questions regarding the proposed salary?
The biggest thing I would look in, is let's make sure I'm looking right. If, if we did, only did the three hundred, we would be number two from the bottom.
Pretty cool.
Guessing, guessing only one school district below us and starting back.
I think there was going to be two, just as right now, before they gave raises, the information that we have. There is, and I printed this.
Perspective, vulnerable, that stood out in the numbers to me.
There, I printed this, and I also have MSTA. If anybody in or wants anything, we, we do two, two major salary surveys every year. One is through MSTA and one is through MNEA. And you never can really compare apples to apples because how we handle salaries and names of positions is different than what someone else's. But it's as close as we can get. Uh, and so we do look at this, and, uh, like I said, I had MSTA that didn't print out, but if you ever want to see anything, these are two good things that we do every year. We also do a salary survey that Rala, I believe, sends out for our dinner, those and those planes, and then someone local. So we do about four salary surveys a year so that we know and can, can try to remain as competitive as we can with the other schools.
I'll make a motion to accept the twenty-three twenty-five salary schedule at forty-one thousand.
Second. Motion by Mark and second by Patty. All in favor? Aye.